...for the singing of our national anthem. Please be seated. All right, item 1.0, additions to the agenda. Any additions? Just a little more music. Seeing none, I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda. councillor Schuler, all in favor? That is carried. Item 3.0, corrections or amendments to the March 30th, 2016 regular meeting of council minutes? Or the April 4th, 2016 special meeting of council minutes? Very well, I'll take a motion to adopt the March 30th, 2016 regular meeting of council minutes, as well as the April 4th, 2016 special meeting of council minutes. councillor Long, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. And we move on to item 5.0, which is proclamation of mental health awareness week, which I don't seem to find, but I know it's in here. There we are. Mental health awareness week, May 2nd through 8th, 2016. Whereas, mental health concerns us all, mother, father, neighbor, friend. And whereas, mental health is more than the absence of mental illness, but is a state of well-being. It is about realizing our potential, coping with the normal stresses of life, and making a contribution to our community. And whereas, one in five Canadians will experience a mental health problem or illness every year. And whereas, people who live with a mental illness can and do thrive, just as people without a mental illness may experience poor mental health. Whereas, social support is a very important part of mental health. Support can come from family and friends, neighbors, coworkers, or classmates, faith communities, clubs, or support groups for specific problems. And whereas, 2016 marks the 65th annual mental health awareness week and focuses on the mental health and well-being of men and boys, and always, as always, encourages people from all walks of life to learn, talk, reflect, and engage others on issues related to mental health and mental illness. Now therefore, I, Glenn McLean, mayor of the town of Drayton Valley, to hereby proclaim the 2nd through 8th, 2016 as mental health awareness week in the town of Drayton Valley. And now we move on to item 6.0, the delegations is... Yep, we're good to go. All right, item 6.1, the 2015 audit of financial report from Phil Dirks of Hawkins-Ep-Dumont. Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Morning, Phil.
Administration, we're going to speak with your local auditor. My name's Phil Dirks. Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Phil Dirks, and I'm glad to be here on behalf of Hawkins-Ep-Dumont, the town's external auditors, to say a few words about the 2015 audit, as well as the financial statements. So I believe you should all have a copy of draft financial statements in your packages or somewhere available to you. I was going to say a few words about the audit and the audit process just before we get into the financial statements and so on. I'll start talking while the slides are coming, but as you're aware, municipalities in Alberta are governed by the municipal government act, and that act requires that local governments have their financial statements audited on an annual basis, so that's our job. Why do we do that? Well, the government wants to know that what the town of Drayton Valley and other municipalities are telling the world on their financial statements is reasonably accurate. Beyond that, council, rate payers of Drayton Valley, should be interested in having some comfort that the financial statements are... have been reported on or looked on, examined by somebody independent of management. So if we can just go to the next slide. I kind of started in on that already. So the idea behind the audit is to enhance the degree of confidence the users can place in those numbers. That's what I was referring to earlier. The auditor seeks reasonable assurance that the financial statements are not materially misstated. In Canada... Thank you. In Canada, auditors are required to follow what's affectionately known as Canadian auditing standards. So that's a big, long bible, so to speak, on auditing rules. And whether we're auditing the town of Drayton Valley or a large public company, those are the same set of rules. Seems kind of silly. A lot of rules. Somebody told me there's over 1,000 the auditor shall include in those rules. So again, just to reiterate, the point of the audit is for us to provide an opinion, and we're seeking reasonable assurance, which would not always be... well, would never be absolute assurance, be approaching absolute assurance. But there's certain things invariably included in a set of financial statements that are more subjective than conclusive. Things like, in the case of municipalities, well, amortization would be one thing where there's some estimating. And specifically with the town of Drayton Valley, you have a landfill obligation, which is a very significant estimate. So those kind of things are not as conclusive as bank balances and debt balances and those kind of things. So the auditing rules also allow the... well, allow, I guess, would be the correct word, the auditors to apply their professional judgment in determining how they approach an audit. There's generally accepted ways to do things. But the auditor... the auditing rules really try to focus the auditors to direct their attentions to areas where they think there's a higher chance of a misstatement occurring. And finally, we also are required to be skeptical. And it doesn't mean... it sounds kind of a little bit negative, I guess, but we just can't take people's words for things. We all have to follow up when things corroborate the evidence that we're provided with. So hopefully that gives you just a little bit of an overview again, what we're doing. We did send... See if I can work this. Where should I point it? Oh, okay. I don't know. I wonder if I just wink at you? Next slide, please. Where was I? I'm all flustered now. Anyways, I guess what I'll say next is to talk a little bit about the auditor's report. I don't read the whole thing, but it's a standard auditor's report. Municipalities in Canada follow what's the accounting framework, Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards. So way down at the bottom of the audit opinion, we're saying there that the financial statements are in accordance with Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards. Most of the rest of this report refers to things I've already talked about. Management is responsible for the financial statements. And in many cases, we do prepare the statements, but we've had a meeting to review those with Kevin and Clayton and Dwight prior to today. Again, middle of the paragraph there talks about our responsibility to follow Canadian auditing standards and so on. So I know what I was going to say. I did... we did issue you an audit planning letter earlier in the year. You might remember. Really, the purpose of that letter is just to keep council informed as to what we're up to, when the audit's taking place, if there was any issues that we felt need to be addressed at that point. But you should always feel free to contact us if you have any questions. So I'm just going to go through the next... through the financial statements and give you some highlights, and maybe just comment a little bit on how we approach things. And if you have any questions, feel free to just stop me at any time. But if you're following along, I'm on page three of my copy of the financial statements, the statement of financial position. So this is assets and liabilities. The town had just over $13 million of cash in the bank at the end of the year. So cash, we always verify that directly, cash balances with the financial institutions. No issues there. Receivables is always a very important area of any audit. We want to make sure that the town or any client is receiving the receivables that they're telling us they have. You can see there, there's quite a decrease from 2015... or 2014 to 2015. Primarily has to do with the water treatment plant funding. Grant was outstanding in '14 for roughly $7 million, and that was down to 1.375 in 2015. So that's primarily the difference. If we could just take a look at the next slide. Gives you a little bit more information on what's included in receivables. The other thing that's a little bit different this year... so trade and other, that was where the water treatment plant grant funding change came in. Local improvement taxes. There was a new one this year for Broome Road, so that was about $630,000. So recently, the... just to remind everybody, recently, the rules on how local improvement taxes are accounted for changed. So now, when you levy a local improvement tax, that is recorded as revenue in the year that the bylaw has passed or levied. But when the tax is levied is really what happens. And then you're collecting the money as we go forward, so that's where that receivable balance comes from. Other than that, it's pretty standard things. You do have an allowance there for $355,000, which is primarily... well, entirely due for the Drayton Valley Thunder accounts. That has allowed for all of those. So as far as we're concerned, there's no issues with receivables. And if we can just go to the next slide. Carrying on down the balance sheet there, still some land on the books. That's the cost of some land that was put on the books many years ago. So financial assets were just over $20 million. On the liability side of things, there was $24.5 million of liabilities. Some of the key things there, again, we want to make sure there's been an accurate cutoff so that 2015's received all the expenditures and so on that was supposed to. So we do a lot of work testing that. One of the main things there on... if you see the decrease there from one year to the next in payables, there's again, the water treatment plant, last year there, last year being 2014, there was a large holdback for the water treatment plant, $1.65 million. There's some holdbacks this year, but not as large as that project is finished, more or less. So other than that, major changes there, you can see in deferred revenue. So deferred revenue, when the town receives money that's earmarked for various projects and it hasn't been spent yet at the end of the fiscal period, that becomes deferred revenue. Again, one of the big things there was some of the bio work funding for the CETC building. There was some grant funding carried forward and some MSI capital money as well. That was used for, among other things, 50th Street work during the year. So anyway, that's why that's down. Landfill closure, post-closure, I mentioned earlier. That was an interesting estimate that the town has. Again, it really didn't change much from one year to the next there. There's a lot of variables that go into that calculation. The town has received reports from a consultant in the last few years, and also, there was some new information from Maplethorpe this year. So, you know, things that could drive that number obviously would be estimates of future costs, inflation rates, borrowing rates, those kind of things. But again, we feel that's a reasonable estimate. Could there be variance there? Absolutely. It could be, you know, a little bit on either side, for sure. Definitely, when we look at something like that, we'd like to err on the side of being higher than lower. And I'm pretty positive that usually when the consultants that do these reports provide numbers, they're being fairly conservative as well. Finally rounding out the liabilities, there was some long-term debt at $14.7 million. Think point out there this year, as you're all aware, there was a new loan from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities for the water treatment plant. That was $4.3 million. So that's been added to the long-term debt. Other than that, we've confirmed all the debt balances with either FCM or the Alberta Capital Financing Authority. So at the end of December then, net debt was $4.1 million. So I wouldn't be too alarmed about that. The net debt number includes all the long-term debt, so you don't have to pay that back all in one year. That $14.7 million is going to be paid back over a number of years. Looking at non-financial assets, if we could just take a look at the next slide... oh, sorry. Talking about debt while we're on the subject, debt limits. Those are required to be disclosed in the financial statement by the MGA. And you can see here that you're well within your debt limits, $24 million at the end of the year. Debt limit total at the top, that number's revenue-driven, so it can fluctuate from one year to the next depending on your operating revenue. It's one and a half times your operating revenue. But the point again is that you're well within your limits. If we could just carry on, probably hit another one, the next slide. Just take a look quickly at some capital assets. So the capital assets is always the largest asset on the municipality's books. And invariably, interesting things come up in that area. But our main concern is that we don't have that, things being capitalized that aren't assets. So this year, some of the highlights that went into that $22 million of additions there. Talked about the water treatment plant, there was $7 million to finish that up. Rentals at the owner pickup arts center were approximately $1 million. The CETC building accounted for $6 million. And work on 50th Street was $3 million. So those are the bigger projects during the year. And we didn't have a problem with any other things that were added to capital. So at the end of the year, there was $121,780 of... or sorry, $121 million of capital assets. And again, just point out that that is not necessarily what the fair market value might be of those assets. That's what you paid, less depreciation to date. So that's why they're nicely segregated at the bottom of the balance sheet. If we can go to the next slide. Once you add the non-financial assets to the net debt, that's going to give you your accumulated surplus. And if we look at the next slide, you can see how the accumulated surplus is broken out. Basically, you have what I call... well, starting at the top there, you can see the different components. So any municipality is going to have a large portion of its equity in tangible capital assets, so that's not equity that you can spend. But then you also have operating reserves, capital reserves, and unrestricted surplus. So just segregated those at the bottom. And you can see that as a percentage of your total surplus, your liquid equity would be 9% of the total this year and 10% last year. I'll show you some slides later from the province that compare you to other places, but the line with comparables, some of the other places, the average is about 13. So you're very close to the average as far as what you have for liquid surplus, I would... as I would describe it. So if we can just continue on, rounds out the assets and liabilities. Looking at revenue. Total revenue, total budget was $26.9 million. Total actual is $25.8. Just a couple of things to point out here. You notice quite a difference in taxes. That would have been for the local improvement. And then also, under fines, you did start your photo radar program this year, but it wasn't as started as early as maybe was originally planned. So that's a little bit less than budget there as well. And I'm happy to report that I have not contributed to that fund to date. It's funny when we have... I was going to say, some places when we're auditing, we see some names on these lists, we always chuckle. Anyways, so overall, things that we would do in revenue areas, taxes, we confirm your assessment, we can look at the tax rates, basically recalculate the number. Sales and user charges is primarily made up of utility fees. Again, in that area, we'll test to make sure that things are being charged at the right rates and get your consumption and try to prove what should have been sold compared to what was. Things like interest, pretty much can prove that back to T5s and so on. So revenue is a fairly easy area to audit, so to speak. If we can just go to the next slide. Expenses came in at $28 point... well, just over $28 million. And the budget was $26. The difference, primarily difference there again, as in other years, was the amortization. The town doesn't have budget for amortization. So if you took that out of there, you'd have actually been slightly less than budget. When the auditor is approaching their work, they can either rely on controls and substantive procedures, or they can do a combination of the two. So when it comes to things like expenses, there's just so many transactions that it's really a necessity to be able to test some controls and place some reliance on controls over purchasing and payroll. So that's a good portion of what we do there. In addition to looking at large transactions and so on, making sure things are accounted for appropriately and appropriately authorized. But overall, like I said, you can see some of the changes that we talked about earlier above and playing out below as well, where you look at policing, that's a little bit down because of the photo radar again and that kind of thing. But overall, things look pretty good. So if we can take a look at the next slide. This just summarizes where we were on the last two slides. So revenues, less expenses, is... gives you the annual operating surplus, which was $2.1 million negative. And again, don't be alarmed. If you look at the very bottom there, I've kind of equalized that to add back the amortization, since you don't budget for that. So you actually had budgeted for $8.39, $1.25, last line at the bottom. And once you adjust for amortization, it would have been at $2.6. So overall, town definitely operated in the black. Revenues exceeded expenditures for operations. Other revenue, again, I'd say it's important, but not necessarily as important as that top line. I mean, you got a lot of grants there again for some of the capital projects, $15.9 million. Those are primarily, again, water treatment plant and the CETC building. But there's no expenses in the statement for capital additions, so that's what makes that annual surplus line, the fourth line from the bottom there, a little bit misleading. You know, if you looked at it, yes, the annual surplus was $13.7 million, but you had to use a lot of that to cover off capital additions and so on. So that's always something just to keep in mind. So overall, it was a good year for the town. Just going to take a quick look here. There was a... let's see. I don't think there was anything too earth-shattering. If you looked at note six, the long-term debt note, you'd see the addition of that Federation of Canadian Municipalities loan to that note this year. Other than that, you did set up a reserve for automated traffic enforcement, which was basically a net profit from the photo radar operations. And that's about it. There is also one new note, note 16. There's a new standard that was effective, a new public sector accounting standard that was effective for this year, but didn't have any impact on the town. But it's just disclosed in note 16 there. That had to do with contaminated sites. So just for your... just so you're aware of that. But other than that, I think that's all I had to say about the financial statements. There was another set of PDF that I had sent. I don't know if you can bring that up at this point, but I was just going to show you a couple of slides that the province puts out. Yeah, those are them, thank you. So the province puts these slides together and compares various municipalities. I've shown you some of these before. But here, they're comparing Drayton Valley to a number of other places, and that's the list. So anywhere from Banff to Stettler. You kind of fall in the middle as far as population goes. And if we look at the next slide, it'll show you assessment. So your population is pretty much in the middle, but your assessment would be second highest in that group. So again, the slides are just for information purposes. So if we can take the next slide, you'll see that this is looking at the percentage of debt limit the town has used. So in this slide, the yellow line is the percentage that Drayton Valley has used. So it's 32.3 at the end of 2014. And the blue line is the average, so to speak, of those other municipalities. So you're very close to the average. The gray shaded area, again, is a range. So you're pretty much smack dab in the middle as far as the range goes. And then if we look at the next slide, again, it's the same kind of idea. Municipal debt per capita, kind of the same kind of results. Pretty close to average and on the lower end of the scale there. Next slide looks at property taxes. Again, you have to take some of these with a grain of salt. Remember, your assessment was way higher than a lot of those places, so hence, your taxes are higher because of that. But again, you're not anywhere near the top as far as property taxes per capita. If we take a look at the next slide. Again, sales and user charges, you can't just look at these without knowing some information behind them. You have the landfill, which some of those other towns and communities probably do not. And we'll see the same kind of thing when we look at expenses, but $12.25 per person for sales and user charges, which would primarily be water sewer, garbage. You also have a lot of commercial usage, so that could factor into that. Looking at the next slide. Again, like I mentioned, expenditures, you know, that's information. So overall, on the far side, total expenditures, $3,600 per person was actually the maximum in 2014. But again, things like I said earlier, if you look at the detailed bars there in the middle, under environmental, you can see where the landfill is adding to that. And under recreation, you're also a little bit higher in some of those areas because of the number of recreation facilities that you have. So again, you know, just to give you a little perspective as to where Drayton Valley fits into things. So if we can just go back to those other slides, I'll just wrap things up. Does anybody have questions on any of the financial statements before I just finish things up here?
Council? Anybody? No? Okay.
So just to wrap up, if we can go to the last slide. Again, like I said, town remains in good financial position. We are required every year to report back to council on the audit. So I think you have a copy of a letter there. Looks like this. Again, if you were to read back, look back at last year, some of the things are very similar or identical to last year, but these are requirement of Canadian auditing standards. And I can always tell people, I don't make the rules, I just follow them. So again, good news, no significant control deficiencies. We didn't find any unusual accounting policies or strange ways of doing things. No material, incorrect, misstatements. Invariably, with any audit, there's going to be a few misstatements as long as they're not material. The auditor is okay with that. And no significant difficulties encountered during the audit. In fact, we thought the audit went very well, and we'd like to thank Kevin and all his staff for all their help in helping us get through and answer questions and track down information. Definitely, it's probably not the most favorite thing for anybody to have to go through, but we have to do it. And so thank you, Kevin, for all your assistance in getting us what we needed. So that concludes what I have to say. Unless somebody has some questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or try.
Any questions at all from council? No? All right. Well, I'm going to do something that is rarely ever done. I'm going to thank the auditor. Thank you for your presentation, thank you for your work. And on behalf of council, thanks to administration for going through that process. Of course, it's an annual event, one that you very much look forward to, I know. And we appreciate it. Kevin, you had a comment?
Yes, I'd also just like to thank Phil, Chris, Carolyn, your entire team at Hawkins-Ep-Dumont. This is my first time on the other side of an audit, so it's been an interesting experience. And I appreciate all your hard work and professionalism during this process. And I'd also like to thank my... the staff of my department and throughout the entire town, because I know the audits reach all parts of the organization. And all your hard work's been appreciated.
This is kind of like an Accountants Academy Awards, isn't it?
Yeah, you know, I always tell people in our office, we should... we need to dig deeper on this and get some kind of trading cards, where... be like a hockey card, you know? I don't know, they think I'm a little weird, but whatever. I would say, like Kevin mentioned, I mean, believe it or not, we get audited by the Institute of Chartered Accountants.
And well, you should.
Yeah, well, every so many years. And it's always different to be on the other side of the equation. It's like, get out of here, you guys, leave us alone. Anyway, thanks again.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Okay, thank you.
All right. 6.2 on the agenda, Community Services Recreation Program. Teresa Dunlop and Sheila Bailey. Do you have numbers? You don't. I think we're good for a while.
All right, we have a bit of a PowerPoint as well this morning. I just wanted...
I just wanted to say good morning to council and administration. As you know, I'm Teresa Dunlop, I'm the program manager with Community Services. And over the last few months, we have pulled together a very dynamic staff team, and we wanted to officially come to council and introduce some of these people and let you know what we've been up to. So with myself and Sheila Bailey, who's my program coordinator, we just wanted, can we go to the first, does this thing? Oh, who's changing my slides for me? Dan, can we have the, there we are. All right, so Corey Finn wasn't able to be with us this morning, but he's on our staff team. Next slide, we don't want to keep you too long. Taylor Metcalf is with us this morning, and she's the person who's been the shining face that meets the people who come for indoor play space, and we might hear from her a little bit later. And Chase Coombs is with us this morning too, and he's the person who greets the teenagers who come to the place twice a week for us. Brooklyn Bonatski is not here this morning, and neither is Jade Voe, and they've both been dynamic people who have helped us out. In January, we started off with a staff team of seven people who were brave enough to join us and another four instructors. We had, I'm going to take my glasses off, we had Pam Moberg, who did our stroller size program. Heather Choi and Lisa Fritzl did our social art working. And we had Trina Wakelin, who taught our kids yoga. Now, two of the original member of our team had to move on to other jobs, but we were fortunate enough to hire Brooklyn sort of mid-season. And so now, we're going to tell you a bit about what we've been doing. So our next slide, please Dan, thanks.
So one of the first programs that we ran was called Math Science. Some of the stats that we have for it, we had 14 kids registered for it, and that went over our registrations by 12, but everybody was so excited to be on board that we had to squeeze a few more in. A few of the experiments that we did there was, some of the kids, we cut up a bunch of potatoes, and I know everybody got the email about the waffle makers. So we cut up potatoes, took all the starch out of them, and the kids actually made glow-in-the-dark magic mud. And then on the bottom there, you'll see a quote from a participant saying, "I told you they'd save the best for last." It was so significant because the last thing that they wanted to do, they told us the whole time that they wanted to make rockets. So one of the last experiments that we did was they made pop bottle rockets, and we went and shot them off across in the school field, and they were tickled pink about it. They absolutely loved that experiment. So it was great to see all the kids leaving with smiling faces. And we actually have quite a few of them returning for another program this spring, which we'll also get to.
All right, the next?
Sorry. And the next program that we had was indoor play space, which I know a few people had visited. It was for ages zero to five, and it encouraged parent participation. We had 185 participants visit throughout the course it was open. And I will let Taylor give a comment about what she felt it accomplished.
Hello. I thought it was a great program because I loved going to work there, I loved seeing all the kids, and they never left unhappy, they always loved being there. And some of them threw up some big fits when they had to leave, but, and it was great to see the parents actually interacting with their kids and playing, and it was just overall a great program, and I loved it a lot.
So the next slide is our social art working, which is our adults. And we had five different classes that we did with 76 participants. So this was actually a lot of laughter, a little bit of wine, and some great pieces that people got to take home, some art pieces. So a very good program.
Next program we ran was stroller size. We had two classes run with five registered in each class, and then we had about four participants that were drop-ins. Pam was an absolutely wonderful trainer, she was so enthusiastic. It was great to see her get involved with all of the parents and adjust the program so that the parents were able to bring their children. It's great to see the moms get out and not have to have the childcare, and they can still keep their child involved and start that fitness early on in life with them. And we also multi-used the squash courts, which I think has turned out great with the renovations as well, and we'll be able to utilize them in the winter when we start the program again. And the next program that we ran was the place, it was the youth drop-in center. It was very neat to see the diverse participants that came in. The first quote that you'll see on there is from a Westward goal support worker, and it was the, her quote was, "Really great program for the youth, lots of activities for them to do, a great use of time for Monday and Fridays to keep them busy and out of trouble." She also mentioned to us that it's great to have a place for people to go with disabilities to come, enjoy the time out, and then they also get to interact with everybody else that's there. On average, we had about 10 to 15 kids drop in every night, and we have done lots of fun games. It's been very exciting, and it's been wonderful seeing the participants get involved. They've pretty much planned the program now with all of their suggestions. Chase, are you comfortable to give a little comment to it?
Sure.
Awesome.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks for having me. And I think that this program is really important, and I'm very grateful to be able to be a part of it. It's great seeing different, like, kids with different socioeconomic backgrounds coming together and just being themselves and getting to vent where they're not being graded or pressured in any way. And I just think that it's very important to have something like that offered in the community, something that's non-dominational, denominational. And one of my favorite memories was the photo scavenger hunt tonight, where we went to 7-Eleven, and it was the giant slurpee day, we get like a slurpee, honey sauce for like very cheap, and they didn't have enough money. And I happened to have some change in my pocket, so I helped them out. And I've never seen such happy children, so it was pretty awesome. Thank you.
All right, the next slide is our kids yoga program. And what parents expressed to me about how grateful they were to have some kinds of programs that, for those children who, for some reason, were not yet enthusiastic about hockey or figure skating or ringette, but they had another alternative, and so there was a lot of energy that was expended, and Trina did a great job being our instructor for that program.
All right, and some of the current spring programs that we're running right now, sorry, just the next slide, oh, perfect, is nature play for kids. This one, we are full at capacity again with, I believe, 16 participants registered. And this one, they go out, we're utilizing the cemetery trails, the Rotary Park, so lots of our different recreational outdoor facilities. And Jessica Doucette is our leader on it, she's been planning it all. Parents have been enjoying it so much that they're actually staying and helping, so it's wonderful to see again that parent participation. We have stained glass running, that one starts on April 28th. We're still open for registrations, but so far, we have three, so I'm very eager to see what that class brings. And also, the place we're running until April 29th is our last day. And like we, Chase recapped, it was great to see, and hopefully, we can see it again next, next winter. And then the next slide, we have upcoming celebrations for youth. The first one that we have coming up is on May 4th. This one is to celebrate different talents. Like Teresa said, it's, we thrive on sports, but it's great to celebrate all of the other youth in town that have different talents. So we have some different talents coming in. Kristen Feniak, she is a country singer. Chad McGee is a rap artist. And then Sapphire Dance is a circus fire performer. So we have a very diverse population of youth coming in for that one. We also have some poetry coming in, some gymnastics and dance. And then the Forest Skate Park Jam we have coming up in August, that one's still in the works of getting planned out, but it's involving youth with getting pla, with helping plan everything. We have a few kids on board that helped to get the skate park coming, so it'll be great to work with them again. And it'll great, it'll be great to see them take ownership of the park again, and we really want to promote, just keeping it clean, really taking ownership of the space that they have.
So we're heading into summer, we're going to give you a precursor of sort of what's in the planning for summer, and hopefully get some feedback from you, should you have any comments on how we're going forward. Our first program that we have up here, that we have proposed, is called Terrifically Trained Leaders, sort of a takeoff of that LLT, which is your Leadership and Training Program. So in a year where we thought it was really prudent to stretch every dollar that we have, we're sort of combining our staff training and our youth leadership camp into a four-day event. So what we're going to include is emergency first aid, we're going to include some high-five training, and then we're going to do some outdoor survival and a campout. So we have kept the cost down, we're trying to actively seek some sponsorship so that we can keep the cost down and make sure that both the youth who are 13 to 17 in town can certainly join, and then perhaps be some, do some volunteering throughout the summer to help the different camps that are in town. The Boys and Girls Club as well will be attending, because we've extended them an invitation to the staff training, and we're going to extend that invitation to all of the other summer camps in town as well. So what I'm excited about today is the fact that Drayton Valley, we now have our official certificate, so we are a registered Town of Drayton Valley High Five Organization. And not only that, but we have our own trained onsite person, which is Sheila, so she's been busily going through all of the training, which means that now we can do high-five training, we can do high-five evaluation of our programs, and we don't have to incur those costs of either sending our staff to Edmonton or Red Deer, or trying to bring that here. So I'm very excited about that, because we'll continue to use that, that resource that we now have within our community. All right, next slide.
Sorry, one more. So with summer coming up faster than I would like it to, I could use a few more months, we have our Parks Play Program coming. It is for ages six to 12, and this is offering a free recreation program in all of our parks. It'll be in five different parks around our community from Monday to Friday, and will run from 8:30 to 4:30. We'll have leaders in the park to facilitate different games, art, and keep the kids busy while they're in the park. This will help children develop independence and social skills, it'll help make, help them meet new friends, and hopefully get some of them ready for the school year. And maybe they'll meet some new friends going into kindergarten.
Okay, next slide. Youth on the Move. So Youth on the Move is a program that we're hoping to do in our parks as well, five different parks. Our staff will be moving from park to park, and I'd like to commend Sheila because she managed to get us some sponsorship from Ford, so we have a vehicle that will be able to take our people and all of the stuff that we're going to accumulate from park to park to make it exciting. So the goal we have for Youth on the Move is to develop solutions for youth issues that may be arising in the parks and common meeting areas, so a chance for them to get together and us to maybe direct them in the right way. Link the youth with the existing community and recreation programs, so if we have youth out there who are couch surfing, you know, we can, we can direct them to our program or other resources that might be out there. Respond to any of the youth issues using a frontline approach. Liaise with the youth agencies and businesses, linking their services to what we call now our YAM, our Youth on the Move Program. And just to help foster a youth-friendly Drayton Valley, so just continuing to take off on that. This program's going to run Wednesdays through Sundays from 3:00 until 10:00, so sort of those times when the youth are out there. And we tried to be strategic on picking parks for the weekend time so that it's not interfering with the neighborhoods. So our last slide is a slide of the different parks that we've chosen. So for our Summer Parks Play, we're going to be in Northview Park, Aspen View Park, Ivan Two Park, the Little Lions Park, and Rotary Park on rotational basis. And for our Youth on the Move, we've picked Mackenzie Park, because that's a large park with lots of activity for us to do there, Rotary Park, Little Lions again, the Forest Skate Park, and then we're going to be over at the Omniplex at, just outside of the West Lions Park. So I think that concludes everything we have to say, we just wanted to bring you up to date, handed, hand that material out to you, and like I say, if we have any comments or concerns, we're really happy to get your feedback.
Well, thank you so much. Certainly applause worthy. Thank you all. You certainly are busy. And, and I really, for my own part, and I think counsel shares this, I really appreciate the comments about trying to stretch every dollar and at the same time, still provide services which we know are needed and wanted in the community. So thanks, thanks very much again. Counsel? Counselor Bussard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming in this morning and sharing your passion with us. All the years that I've been with counsel, often in the summer, we hear, "We need more programming, we need more programming, we need more programming." And what you've just brought before us shows us that you've, through January, you've provided some seven or eight different types of programming, and through the summer, offer even more for a diverse group of people, right from babies with their moms to young adults, and perhaps even incorporating some work with seniors in there. And I'm just thrilled to see this. As counsel, of course, we're responsible for funding certain programs, and to me, it's really important that I see the fruit of what we fund. And I think that what you've showed for, showed to us today, shows me that we've invested well in this program, and that the youth, especially in the community, are going to benefit from what you're offering them throughout the summer, not just it for social benefit, getting together and having something to do, but for relationships, for mental health, for just keeping them active physically. I think there's great benefits there. So I really appreciate all the time that has been poured into shaping these programs and for your energy and passion in rolling them out. And I just look forward to hearing great reports in the fall of how these summer programs have gone. And thank you so much, all of you, for, for your time and your talents.
Counselor Nando, and then Counselor Wheeler.
I'm so pleased. Oh my gosh, you guys have done a terrific job. There is not a demographic in youth that is not represented in these, and that's what I love to see, like, including, I love, love, love the leadership one for, for kids, because that's usually a gap area, that, that age group, because they can be home in the summer, that they don't really get targeted for things like that. And I love that you're creating capacity, and that that can help other organizations. I love that. So I'm so impressed with what you've done. I'm so pleased that it's linking to all our existing plans, that community had, had been involved in and shaping, so I could not be more pleased. I'm excited for the summer, try and squeeze in my kids where I can too, and I'm really excited for the summer and what we can, we can offer. And I appreciate that a lot of these things are zero to no cost, and I think that's significant given what we're, our community is facing right now, because it's, it's going where it needs to. And I love the map of all the parks. Is that going to be available online as well? It can be. I think that's terrific. I think, especially people new to the community or wondering where is, what, what we have, I think that's a terrific map to showcase our park system, so, good job.
Very good. Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you. I would say the same thing, I think it's wonderful. We grew up spending a lot of time in the city with my cousins, and they had like a Parks and Play Program, and we always thought it was the coolest thing ever to just go to the park and hang with a bunch of kids, and they would always be playing different games, and it depended on how many kids showed up, what they did, it was, it was super flexible, which was really nice, so. With the Youth on the Move, what's the kind of age range you're looking for?
Youth on the Move age range will be 13 to about 18. We're not going to turn away 12, 11-year-olds if they do come, but that is sort of the demographic that we're aiming for.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Anything further? All right. Thank you so, so much, appreciate it. All right, moving on, item 6.3, March RCMP Statistics, Staff Sergeant Calahou, top that.
Welcome. So, good morning, Mayor and Council. Here today to prevent, or prevent crime, of course, but also to present the stats for March. The report that I sent to you covers, again, both the January to March historical statistics from 2012 to 2016, as well as the monthly statistics. I'm just going to briefly go over the historicals. From last year, going to our assault count, we've seen over the past, well, basically five years, we've seen in this quarter a steady decrease in the amount of assaults we've had. Last year, we had 36; this year, we have 23 to date. So that is a good sign that way. Unfortunately, we have a couple more criminal harassment files that could take place, and we're basically at the same point with our uttering threats at nine calls for the year. From last year to this year, our break-in enters are up quite significantly from 10 to 27. I'll touch on more of that when I get into the actual monthly numbers. And our theft of motor vehicle, we're down 1, 14 to 13. And our theft under, we were from 51 to 68 this year, and our mischief to property, we're down from 70 to 52, so kind of all over the place in how we're looking at things right now. One thing I did want to mention on page two is that our false alarm count is up from 69 to 76, and I'll touch on that with our monthly statistics here again. Moving on to page four, which is the March 2012 to 2016. This March, we had 10 calls for assaults. Of those, seven went to charges, all of them family violence-related. There is one call that the complainant did not want to pursue charges, and it wasn't a family violence issue, it was more of just a fight. Someone got punched in the nose, and they said they didn't want to deal with it, so. The others were cleared in such a way that they were consensual fights, bar fights, that type of thing, and so they didn't want to deal with it either, so. Touching on the break-in enters, we had 12 this past month. I did a bit more looking into that as to how our trends are looking. Seven of those are business-related. I think about three of those were with local liquor stores in town. There was, I believe, an electronics store that got hit. And there was a couple of others that were business-related, but were more along the lines of some of our abandoned businesses where they're breaking in to stay in there. So that's why they're classified in that way, and usually we get there and then they get the HEV out, and that's how it works. So we did have one residential call where we were actually located and arrested the person while they're still in the residence, so that was good to get that guy off the streets. Moving on to our theft under, looking at some of the stats there of the 12 that we recorded last month, five of them were related to shoplifting. Three of them at liquor stores, again, stealing liquor. Two of them were actually at grocery stores where they're stealing food, so. Moving on to our frauds, and this is, we had six this past month. Of those, three were internet-related. So again, this is where we have people who are getting contacted about a lottery they won, and they say, "Well, we just need you to pay us some money ahead of time so that we can get it from our bank and wherever," and then they're owed that money. Or it could be those deals that are too good to be true, so we have something like a quad that's getting sold for $4,000 when it's actually a $20,000 quad. And so, again, then they send the money and they're owed all that money. Or the last one was, the last one was with regards to a false money transfer from the Canadian Revenue Agency, so that one there, unfortunately, they lost money on that one too. So I guess some tips on that are just, again, to be mindful of what you're buying or what you're applying to and to not release information over the internet.
Just a comment on that, if I may. In my other life, I get to see things that I wouldn't otherwise want to. And what you're talking about, the letters, that, some of them are actually quite good. They've taken some time and care to indicate the apparent relation who died in somewhere and left $10 million and so on and so forth. So, I mean, I'll leave it to you to give the advice on how people can protect themselves, but anything that's unsolicited like that should probably be taken with a grain of salt.
It's true. I guess I'll take this opportunity to let you guys know about a new initiative that the detachment is providing as a service to the public in general overall knowledge. I'm starting a 12-part series into property crime and how to protect yourself. So this past month, I've sent something to the town, I've sent it to the county, to the Western Review. This edition is based upon things like marking your property and how you can correctly mark it so that if you are the victim of property crime, how it can be brought to us, we can put it on the system, or how to properly identify it so that, you know, as an example, a piece of jewelry, taking a picture of it with a ruler beside it so you can get dimensions, looking at the proof marks, things like that, right? So all of that stuff, any distinctive sort of features. So all those things are things that are put into the article. They're short, they're not meant to be entirely comprehensive, but they're just to give you guys some tips on what to do. So next month, I'm going to be touching on vehicle thefts and theft from vehicles. And that's going to be, as you know, with our fiscal year started, so that's one of our initiatives for this year, is to do a public education for the next 12 months, so. Moving on to...
Sorry.
The second last page. We had 27 false alarms this month. Now, I had to do some digging into this a little more because I was concerned about the amount that we've been still getting even after the bylaws come into effect. I can tell you that based upon whatever searched, we were actually called off in 18 of those 27 cases. So while the number reflects that that's a false alarm, we didn't actually attend in 18 of those instances. Now, when I say didn't attend, my definition of that to the detachment, because they're asking me, "Where is the line?" And I said, "Okay, if you actually attend the property and you actually do the check, that I call that attendance. If you're on the way and you're just about there and you get called off, that's not an attendance." So, you know, getting called off 18 of those instances, three of them were accidental. So either they accidentally pushed the panic button, or they had a fob that they accidentally pushed the button on. So, you know, we kind of give them a bit of grace on that, say, "Okay, just be more careful in the future," sort of thing. Of the ones we attended, there was four that we attended. One that we attended, there was no answer, and one that we attended where, again, there's nobody there but unknown cause as to why it happened, no idea what took place there, and there's no entry, so we couldn't touch on it. So those are the 27 for the month. So I guess the common trend that I'm trying to show here is that we are getting calls now more frequently to get called off when it's a false alarm. So that's at least something. The last page itself, which is the chart, the sideways chart in the panoramic view here, I'm going to touch on the two issues that have come up, again, that being with our business break-in enters and with regards disposal abuse. This past month, again, we had seven cases go to charges. It is an ongoing issue, I think. Well, if I'm going to give my opinion, I would say the likely stressors in town, that type of thing, they're contributing to that, either financially or whatever the case may be, work-related, economy-related. So we are monitoring that, and in every case where we have the grounds to charge, we are. So we're making sure that people are protected in that way. The other part with the businesses, since we've noticed a spike, we've been compiling some statistics on areas where we need to patrol more. It seems to be more in the downtown core during the off-hours and the late hours. We're going to try and get more patrols in there, see if we can heat up some people, and then we'll also look at some of our prolifics that are still out and see what they're doing and where they're going. So we have some plans in place. We're just hoping that we can get some action on it before it becomes any worse. So with that, I'm open to any questions.
Thank you very much. Counselor Wheeler had a question earlier.
It was just on the prevention series that you're doing. Do you have a set day, like is it every third Tuesday of the month, or is it moving?
You know what? This last one, I just submitted here in the past couple of days. I got a bit of a late start on it because of the different meetings, but I plan on trying to get it in within the first two weeks of every month.
Is it just information coming out in the paper? Are you hosting an event, like people can come and talk to you?
It's information in the paper. I submitted it to, I think, I read it here about getting it hopefully onto the town websites or the, and that type of thing, as well as with the county. So I'm trying to spread it out all over the place. The main intent is when we, well, let's touch on the marking of material, because that was something of personal property, something that we see quite often, is where people figure, "I'm just going to copy the serial number, that's enough." What people don't understand, for us to put it on the system, we need the make, the model, and the serial number. If we have pictures of the property, that also helps, like good pictures of detail if there's anything on it. And I also suggested that, you know, marking it inconspicuously somewhere so that there's a personal mark somewhere that shows that it's yours. While I can't guarantee we'll always recover property, when we do, those things help. So as an example, some people decide to use a personal mark like their driver's license Not saying that that's good or bad. Some people use a company where they actually laser etch it onto it, so there is options available. But the last thing that I had mentioned, and again, basically I'm saying what I wrote down, but more or less that it also helps in the area of insurance claims, that if you can prove you had the property there and this is what it was, it makes your claims go much smoother in the end. So for us, the main thing that we find is that we have people who come to the office and they say, "Well, I had a 42-inch TV, I had this stereo," and I say, "Okay, well, do you have anything that you can give us for identifying features?" And most times, they say, "No." And so it's difficult for us, even if we were to find it, to link it back to the person afterwards.
Thank you.
Very good. Anything further? All right. Thank you very much.
Excellent.
Appreciate it.
Have a good day.
Thanks. Item 6.4, Domestic Violence in Your Workplace Training Presentation. Katie Hickman. I saw Astrid as well. Welcome.
Come on, councilors.
Astrid has laryngitis, is that right?
Good morning, councilors. Thank you for having us. I just want to give a brief content warning, I guess, before we begin, because we will be discussing a very sensitive topic, so if anyone feels like they do need to leave the room, feel free, won't be offended, and I will be around for a few minutes afterwards if anyone does want to come and talk to me, get some referrals or whatever. So, yes, so yes, today we will be talking about the Domestic Violence in Your Workplace Program that was developed by ACWS and now available in Drayton Valley through partnership with Pembina Crisis and Astrid Mitchell. Can we go to the next slide? Yes, I'm Katie Hickman. I'm from Pembina Crisis Connection. I think most of you are probably familiar with the organization. So we have been in this community for the last 25 years. Our mandate is the prevention of violence of all forms directed towards self and others. So it's a very broad mandate which covers things like domestic violence all the way to bullying, suicide, elder abuse, and child sexual abuse, so quite a broad mandate. We have also always been dedicated to bringing programming in that is focused on research-based best practice. And so that's why last year we became associate members of the Alberta Council of Women's Shelters, which is also dedicated to prevention on a research-based model. And I'll just introduce Astrid as well. So she's working with us on this project. Astrid's been in Drayton Valley for 27 years, the past 12 of which she has been working in the fields of occupational health and safety, primarily in the transportation industry. She received her diploma in OHNS with distinction from U of A in 2013 and currently works as an OHNS safety consultant. And she has been certified through Alberta Council of Women's Shelters to facilitate the introductory content for the Domestic Violence in Your Workplace Program. Next slide, please. I'll give you a bit of background on the Alberta Council of Women's Shelters. So they are a not-for-profit ambassador and support agency for women's shelters. They have 43 member shelters across Alberta, so they do not themselves provide direct programming, they do not provide shelter or counseling, but they act as an ambassador for their member shelters. They're the forefront of developing promising practice in violence prevention based on Alberta-specific and action-based research among their partners, and they engage communities in ending violence and abuse against women and children, because it should be noted that 50%, about 50% every year of the occupants of women's shelters are children. So they do things like violence prevention projects like our Breakfast with the Guys, which the town may be familiar with, and the CFF Project, as well as professional development training for shelter workers, support organizations like mine, and now workplaces as well. And they also build practical knowledge on their action-based research. Next slide, please. So what this program actually is, is a toolkit. So I'll give you a brief introduction to the toolkit. So developed in partnership with the Health Sciences Association of Alberta, the toolkit provides just that. It's a suite of tools and a framework around which an organization can build their own domestic violence action plan, and is designed to fit into an organization rather than come in and sit on top and tell you exactly what to do. So it utilizes and builds on teams and procedures that already are in existence in an organization and builds on your strengths to fill gaps when it comes to domestic violence. So it builds that management commitment, so it provides a clear case for action. So it outlines domestic violence and the impacts in the workplace, summarizes recent research, and provides an AICs process for creating that workplace program. So yeah, it provides a guide for management to think about what something like a domestic violence response team would look like within their organization, whether it's large, whether it's one person, whether it's perhaps a third-party organization that comes in to respond, however it works for each organization, very, very highly customizable. It provides staff awareness materials, pamphlets, the latest research, and also provides options for training through community links, so through organizations like mine or member shelters that are around the community. So it provides those opportunities for staff training, response team training, and general employee awareness. All right, can we go to the next slide? So we think that this is a really good fit for the Town of Drayton Valley. So Drayton Valley has a strong track record and really demonstrated commitment to the sustainable community development as well as business development. The Town of Drayton Valley is well-positioned for leading change. So we know that the town and Mayor McLean and Tyler Russell were a really valued part of the first Drayton Valley Breakfast with the Guys that PCCS put on, and we really see moving forward that the town is a leader in the area of domestic violence prevention and a really strong supporter of businesses in the community. Next slide, please. All right, so we'll do a little backup a little bit and talk about why we would have this conversation in the first place. So every hour of every day, women in Alberta will undergo some form of interpersonal violence from an ex-spouse or ex-partner. And so this is just the statistics for ex-spouses and partners. This doesn't include current spouses and partners. And I'll just make a note on the statistics that we have, that because of the nature of the Alberta Council of Women's Shelters, dealing primarily with women's shelters, and because of the nature of reporting, most of the statistics, 95% of the statistics, are female-based, so I just want to make a quick note on that, because anyone, regardless of gender, can and is the victim of domestic violence. And that's been a really big factor in developing this toolkit as gender-neutral. So because we recognize that domestic violence doesn't discriminate... So, because we recognize that domestic violence doesn't discriminate. But we'll start with the definition. So, domestic violence is a systematic pattern of abusive behaviors where the relationship is characterized by intimacy, dependency, and trust. So, abusive powers are intentional and they are intended to gain power, control, and induce fear. So, it may include physical violence, sexual violence, emotional or psychological intimidation, financial, spiritual, or verbal abuse, as well as stalking and the use of electronic devices to harass and control. Next slide, please. All right. And so, oftentimes, I'm confronted with the question, "What does this have to do with the workplace?" And the answer is quite a bit. So, domestic violence in the workplace, so it can very significantly and severely impact an employee's safety and security within the workplace, and it can be direct or indirect, and it can affect not just the intended target of the abuse, but coworkers, other employees, management, everyone. It's not just isolated to the intended target. So, the Domestic Violence in Your Workplace Program is not about giving companies or organizations something extra to work with, it's about helping them realize and giving them the tools to deal with a problem that has always been there. So, the Alberta Occupational Health and Safety Code, Section 390, already states that employers must develop a policy and procedures respecting workplace violence. Criminal Code of Canada, employers have a legal duty to take reasonable steps to prevent employees from harm. We feel that including domestic violence under these legal statutes is a very logical conclusion, and we'll move to the next slide. So, we just have a few statistics here. So, this was put together by the Butler Business, sorry, I can't read it, but it was commissioned by the ACWS. And as you can see, there's significant financial reasons why companies should start taking domestic violence seriously. You can see at the bottom there, the total cost per year for a company of 100 employees is $85,000. And that's estimated, this is a conservative estimate. So, the top 29% of victims will take time off of work. Conservative estimate is about, sorry, two days per month. It says about 56% of female victims will also arrive late five days and leave early two days. 74% of female victims are harassed while at work, so someone calling the front desk 20 times a day, texting, not letting someone focus on their work. Victims and perpetrators require time off to attend court if there is criminal charges being processed, they do require time off. 94% of female victims experience problems at work. Close to 50% of victims lose a job and do impart to domestic violence, whether it's a lack of support in the workplace or feeling unsafe in the community and having to move on. And so, when organizations do lose employees, to retrain, rehire, losing that valued time put in, that's a huge cost. And we'll go to the next slide now. So, as I was saying before, the ACWS and the Pembina Crisis definitely feels that domestic violence should fall under the workplace violence policies, and we're not alone. So, we're talking about this now because there have been very recent changes in Ontario Occupational Health and Safety Act, and there are anticipated changes federally that would impact quite a few businesses in Drayton Valley and the County of Brazu, particularly transportation industries that travel outside of our borders. So, the changes on Ontario happens in 2015. Amendments were made to the Occupational Health and Safety Act to make workplace safer from violence and harassment. The Act now includes specific requirements to address domestic violence, and I'll just read you the wording. So, it requires employers who are aware or who should be reasonably aware that domestic violence may occur in the workplace to take every precaution reasonable in the circumstances to protect a worker at risk of physical injury. Employers will also be required to have policies and programs regarding workplace violence, including domestic violence in the workplace. So, this legislation came down quite suddenly without a lot of preparation for businesses and industries to adjust. The legislation was a result of a highly violent and publicized incident with Lori DuPont, who was a nurse at Windsor Hospital and who was murdered by her colleague, Dr. Mark Daniel, who later took his own life, at the hospital. Following an inquiry, there were 84 signs of violence and identified opportunities to intervene, including damage to hospital equipment, unprofessional behavior in front of patients and colleagues, verbal abuse, and physical assault that resulted in broken finger. And those were just a few of the identified signs. So, we'll do the next point, please. So, there are also anticipated changes to Alberta's occupational health and safety legislation. And while Ontario didn't have a lot of time to prepare, our organizations, businesses, municipalities do. So, Alberta, the Alberta Domestic Violence Death Review Committee has recommended amendments to the OHNS Act to recognize and include family violence as a workplace hazard, complete with the mandatory training. The Minister of Human Services has agreed to implement these recommendations. We don't have a date for when these will come down. We can't make a guess at when the government will get around, but it is something that they have stated, that they will implement these recommendations. So, it is coming, we're not sure when, though. And the Alberta Council of Women's Shelters is involved in consulting on these changes, and feedback from the Domestic Violence in Your Workplace Program will be taken into consideration when they're doing their consulting. Next slide, please. Yes, I'll also mention the liability. So, in the case of Lori DuPont, there is an $85 million civil suit filed against the CEO and eight senior administrators of the hospital, which was eventually settled out of court, but it took years, hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees, not to mention just the personal traumatic experience of the fellow colleagues and staff from having to go through that and be a part of that process. Next slide, please. All right, so, why our community? So, next, please. One in five Alberta employees is reported to be experiencing the impact of domestic violence at work. So, whether that is directly as the target, as the chosen target of abuse, or someone who has a family member or friend who has experienced abuse and maybe calls them during work hours for support, or someone who is very, who has a colleague who can't concentrate, who hasn't been able to do the work because they're a victim of abuse and they have to pick up the slack. So, it takes all forms. Next, please. One in four women in Canada will experience domestic abuse in their lifetime. So, these people live and they work here in all of our communities. It's also important to note that Drayton Valley and the Brazu County, according to the 2013 Brazu County Economic Profile, that Drayton Valley and our county have a higher-than-average workforce participation. At this point in time, that may be changed, that may be changing, but as an average, we do have more people involved in the workforce than is general in Alberta. Next, please. So, impact starts locally. So, yes, the Butler Business Solutions Focus Group, that had the chart with the statistics earlier, one of the participants in that program who is involved in that consultation said that, "So, if I have 1,000 employees, I have a million-dollar problem," and that's huge. And so, it really starts with addressing in smaller areas because it builds up very, very quickly, and that momentum builds. Some of the companies that already use the, that have integrated the Domestic Violence in the Workplace Program are Syncrude, the Workers' Compensation Board, the City of Edmonton, Epcore, Enbridge, Be Clean, and Shaw, among a few others. So, there is demonstrated capability there. Next slide, please. So, what does that mean for the town of Drayton Valley and the organizations within it? So, there are a few things that can be provided and can be implemented. So, the first is training. So, the toolkit is highly customizable and designed to be used as a guide, and the training can help realize the response teams, train supervisors and managers to handle disclosures as well as have those conversations if they suspect someone is a victim of abuse. And also, training to design custom hazard awareness that meet the OHNS standards when they do come down or before they come down, if companies and organizations want to get ahead of it and maybe influence some of that policy that does happen. Also, policy, supporting the development of effective and responsive policy backed by the latest Alberta-specific research from the Alberta Council of Women's Shelter, as well as leading. They can lead, this is a position I see the town of Drayton Valley, leading and having those conversations on a larger scale, making it an issue of awareness and leadership and why not. Next slide, please. So, yes, with that, I'd just like to say thank you so much for your time and attention and your leadership. So, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Katie, and Astrid. I know you would like to talk.
Yes.
I have some voice, I'd like to just say one thing.
You do have some voice.
So, I've been contracted by the Alberta Council of Women's Shelters to give them some insight on how to tackle the occupational health and safety legislation when it comes to Alberta. In terms of the training, I spent some time with the safety officers at Pembina Pipeline last week, and we're meeting with their entire occupational health and safety staff tomorrow in Calgary to give them an hour-long PowerPoint presentation on how to be ahead of the legislation. Our intent also, we have plans to try to work with possibly the Chamber of Commerce and offer this to the smaller employers of Drayton Valley and Brazu County so that they can understand what's coming and what they need to do ahead of the game. That's the major challenge for them. I think that's all I can say.
So, for anyone in the, any business in the community that is interested in receiving the training, they should contact you.
Contact Katie.
Contact Katie.
We're trying to, this is so new, I've only taken the training in the last six weeks. So, we've had a lot of ideas and we're really excited how we're going to roll all of this out, but it takes time to make those plans, but we're hoping to offer it to anyone.
Okay. Counselor Bossert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, ladies, for coming in. If groups, businesses, organizations are interested in the toolkit training, what kind of time commitment is that to the company?
So, if businesses and companies are interested, so, it's very customizable, so, there are different levels. So, for larger organizations, someone like a Pembina Pipeline, that would be several months to develop something. But if it's smaller, we can offer something that would take, do an introductory three-hour with managers, and then it's really up to them how far they want to take it. And because there is no legislation in place yet, it's really up to them, if they just want the toolkit and the three-hour introduction, that can be it. But if they do want follow-up support, it is really very much up to the organizations. It is very organic and customizable.
Very good. Anything further? All right. Thank you so much. This was very helpful and informative. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, with that, we will call a 10-minute break and reconvene, well, approximately 10 minutes. Representations for questions, concerns, for public time? No? All right. 8.0 decision items. Counselor Bossert, 8.1.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Administration has been working together to prepare a new highway, sorry, a new traffic bylaw which separates out the operation of heavy vehicles and off-highway vehicles, much as we did with the Dangerous Goods Route within Drayton Valley. The attached bylaws are intended to modernize our approach to the use of roads and the conduct of users of those roads, including motorists, pedestrians, bicyclists, and the like, I would say cyclists and the like. The town currently has a traffic bylaw from 2000. However, it was felt that there is a benefit to breaking out certain portions of the current bylaw to allow amendments as may be needed, given the magnitude of each of the proposed components. Further, administration has looked into the fines levied in other municipalities in terms of traffic enforcement and recommends that Drayton Valley's bylaws reflect penalties which are at a level consistent with other municipalities. Administration is recommending that the attached three bylaws be given first reading today, after which advertising and public consultation can take place. Therefore, I move that council give first reading to Traffic Bylaw 2016-03P.
Thank you, Counselor Bossert. We'll take these each in turn. Any discussion on this motion? Counselor Schuler?
Yeah, just a question. Under 12, where is it here? Just one second. Under Section 12, Parallel Parking, just notice that in 12.2 and 12.3, there's a indication that the vehicle must be facing the direction of travel, but under 12.1, it does not indicate that. So, just for clarity's sake, does that then mean that someone can park on the opposite side of the street facing traffic instead of in the direction of traffic?
Shandra?
That really wouldn't be the intention. No, we can certainly change 12.1 to indicate facing the direction of traffic, much as the other sections.
Okay.
I would point out, too, that whether we change it or not, doesn't change provincial legislation, and the provincial legislation would indicate that it's the, that the, sorry, the comments about the direction of travel pointed in the direction of travel. But not having read that recently, couldn't tell you.
Yeah, you're probably right under the provincial legislation, but I think just for clarity's sake, if we could maybe have a Point C put in there indicating that, just for clarity.
So, Mr. Divan, we're taking that as an amendment, I gather?
That would be, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Okay. And, okay, so, Counselor Schuler has, I gotta deal with this first, sorry. Counselor Schuler's made a motion for an amendment to the, to the, to this bylaw, 2016-03P. Is there any discussion on Counselor Schuler's motion for an amendment? No, seeing none. All in favor of Counselor Schuler's proposed amendment? Okay, that is carried. Now, we're back to the main motion, as, with the policy as amended, or the bylaw as amended. Now, Counselor Wheeler.
Thank you. I just had a clarification question on 43.3. It talks about people on their bicycle wearing an approved helmet, and then 43.4 says, "No person shall permit a person under the age of 12 to use a bicycle without an approved helmet." And I'm just wondering why the separation out of the under-12s? If it says, "No person shall operate a bicycle without a helmet," and then we say, "You won't allow anyone else to," but I just wasn't sure. If you were responsible for the under-12, you get the fine? Is that how it works?
That's how it would work, yes.
Okay.
You don't fine a six-year-old, but the person responsible for them would receive a fine.
Anyone under 12? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Persons under 12 can't be charged with this sort of thing or criminal offenses or whatever. Any, anything further? Oh, Shandra?
I did have one point on page 37 of 40 of the bylaw. We're seeing the repeal of the existing traffic bylaw, and I did leave a blank in there accidentally. And it should reference bylaw 2001-16, which was an amendment to the initial traffic bylaw, which would also be repealed as a result of this. So, I would...
I'm sorry, I didn't...
I'm sorry.
On page 37?
Page 37.
That's where I lost you.
Right, okay. So, there's a blank there where we're talking about the repeal of the existing traffic bylaw.
Oh, yeah.
And that...
Oh, yeah.
And that should reference bylaw 2001-16, which was an amendment of the 2000 traffic bylaw.
So that sounds like an amendment as well. Does someone want to move that? Counselor Long? All right. Any discussion on that? All in favor? We're amending it to include the reference to 2001-16. So...
Sorry, I didn't have a copy of the bylaw. I had to ask Tyler for it. It took a few minutes to find that section. 12.1 specifically states the right wheels of the vehicle have to be against the curb no more than 50 centimeters away. So that's basically telling you that the right wheels of your vehicle, so you have to be facing the direction of travel when you're parked or parking. That's why it doesn't, in 12.1, talk about, whereas in 12.2, it's talking about a one-way highway.
That's an excellent call.
And I'd have to say that that's probably exactly what the provincial statute says.
That'd be my guess. All right. So adding the sentence that we've added doesn't actually change a damn thing. Yeah. All righty. Hey, Shandra, did you have any more?
No.
Of course. All right. We seem to be stumbling our way through this one just fine. Any, anything further on the motion as twice amended? No? All right. All in favor? That is carried. Counselor Bossert.
I move that council give first reading to Heavy Vehicle Bylaw 2015-15T.
Thank you, Counselor Bossert. Any discussion on this motion? All right. All in favor? That is carried. One spitting twice. Counselor Bossert?
Finally, I move that council give first reading, pardon me, first reading to Off-Highway Vehicle Bylaw 2015-16T.
Thank you, Counselor Bossert. Any discussion on this motion? All right. All in favor? That is carried. I appreciate the effort administration has gone to, to separate out and update these bylaws. Moving on, 8.2, Counselor Naddo, Municipal Assets Naming Policy.
Shandra Stain, where she is. In an effort to establish a standard of practice for the naming of municipal assets, parks, facilities, streets, et cetera, administration has prepared the attached draft Municipal Assets Naming Policy. While the town entertains applications to name and rename parks, such as Northview Park being named Peace Park, we currently have no policy or formal procedure in place for the process. With the projects that are currently underway, it has become evident that the town would benefit from implementing a policy to guide this process. Community buy-in and participation are contemplated in this document, with the encouragement, engagement, and promoting a sense of pride and ownership from community members. Therefore, I make the motion that council approve the Municipal Assets Naming Policy A0116 as presented.
Thank you, Counselor Naddo. Any discussion on this motion? All right. Seeing none. All in favor? That is carried. Moving right along. 8.3, Counselor Long.
Thank you. Excuse me. The town of Drayton Valley recognizes that there are nonprofit organizations that host community events to raise funds or that require donations for worthwhile projects, programs, or services. In an effort to support these organizations and their efforts, the town may provide support grants to assist with the hosting of community events and initiatives. Funding applications are to be reviewed on a quarterly basis. The second quarter deadline was April 1st, 2016, and $5,000 is available for distribution. Several applications were received indicating the variety of community organizations who are contributing to improving the quality of life of our residents. The objectives of each of the organizations being recommended by administration for a community event grant are consistent with the objectives outlined in the Social Development Plan and the Community Sustainability Plan. The 5th Annual Black and White Ladies Diamond Gala and the 18th Annual Show and Shine and New Outdoor Event, New Outdoor Theater Event are events that encourage and support local groups and organizations, businesses and governments to work collaboratively. That's the Social Development Plan. The 5th Annual Raise the Wolf Comedy Gala encourage community members to take ownership of their community and make it safer for everyone, the Sustainability Plan. The National Archery in Schools Program Provincial allows Drayton Valley to participate in wide-scale initiatives, provincial and national, which benefit the community. And the 2nd Annual Pro-Rodeo continues planning with community organizations and businesses to provide the appropriate rural cultural programs and facilities for the community. Number of motions, I'll do them one at a time, is that what you would prefer?
All in one? I'd be content to hear a motion that encapsulated all of these recommendations.
That would save you some time. So I...
Sometimes omnibus isn't a threat to democracy.
Okay. I move that council award the Rotary Club of Drayton Valley 5th Annual Black and White Ladies Diamond Gala a total of $500 from the community event grant to support local initiatives. I also move that town council award the Cost for Critters 5th Annual Raise the Wolf Comedy Gala a total of $1,000 from the community event grant. That town council award the Safari Club International Drayton Valley Chapter 2016 National Archery in Schools Program Provincial a total of $1,500 from the community event grant. The town council award the Drayton Valley Pro-Rodeo Society 2nd Annual Pro-Rodeo a total of $1,000 from the community event grant to help offset facility rental fees. And the town council award the Northern Thunder Car Club 18th Annual Show and Shine and Outdoor Theater a total of $1,000 from the community event grant to support the outdoor theater.
Thank you, Counselor Long. Any discussion on that motion? Counselor Naddo?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering, Teresa, would you be able to answer, or maybe it's Annette, I'm not sure, on what the total ask was for the community groups?
I would have to guess it's something like that here, but for some reason, everyone seems to want the full $5,000.
Right.
So we are going to take your suggestion and, Tyler and I will work at making sure that that goes into the next information that goes out to them, that there is only $5,000 for everybody in that quarter.
Okay. Good. That was my comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. 8.4, Counselor Schuler.
Thank you, Worship. At the time of implementing the AMA traffic enforcement in the community, council directed that the funds received from this process be held in a safe and healthy community reserve. The intent of such a reserve was that funds would be utilized for initiatives within Drayton Valley with a safety or health focus. Under the proposed policy, the breakdown of the allocation of reserve funds is initially as follows. A up to 50% for safe and healthy community allocation, no less than 40% for lifecycle capital replacement plan, and up to 10% participatory budget. The attached policy stipulates that administration will review applications for funding which meet the criteria for safe and healthy community projects and make recommendations to council for allocation of these funds. The purpose of the automatic traffic enforcement within the community meets the goals of both the Community Sustainability Plan and the Social Development Plan to establish a community thriving in wellness, health, and safety. With the creation of this fund, money can be targeted towards projects that meet the goals of safety and health initiatives. In ongoing efforts to increase safety for the users of the roads within Drayton Valley, the Traffic Advisory Committee Terms of Reference set out the mandate of the committee and its composition. Council's being asked to approve the attached terms of reference after which committee members can be appointed. So I therefore move that council approve the Automatic Traffic Enforcement Fund Allocation Policy A0414 as presented.
Thank you, Counselor Schuler. I appreciate to the work that administration has done together with council to try to get this policy right. We have spent a fair bit of time and I feel it is in the appropriate form that allows us to further develop the participatory budget framework and establish the Traffic Advisory Committee with the public representation thereon. So, once again, appreciate the effort that administration has gone to in this regard. Any discussion on this motion? None? Okay. All in favor? That is carried. Counselor Schuler?
Thank you. I also move that council approve the Traffic Advisory Committee Terms of Reference as presented.
Okay. Any discussion on this motion? All right. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. 8.5, Counselor Wheeler.
Thank you. The audited financial statements for 2015. Further to the presentation of the 2015 audited financial statements by Phil Dirks of Hawkins and Dumont earlier this morning, administration recommends that council pass a resolution to receive the report as information. Therefore, I move council receive the presented audited financial statements for 2015 as information.
Thank you, Counselor Wheeler. Any discussion on this motion? All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. And now we are on to 9.0, Department Reports. 9.1, Engineering and Development. Planning and development first. Shahid.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council Administration. Since our last council meeting, March 30th, Planning and Development has approved five development permits and eight business licenses. So eight development permits include move mobile home, detached garage, deck, installation signage, that's for fitness business. And the fifth one is commercial exteriors, interior renovation, and drive-through is for the KFC restaurant. And the business licenses include End Up Plumbing and Heating Limited, A and L Construction, TGS Mobile AC Services Limited, Define Browse by Alisa, Nexsource Power Drayton Valley Inc. Oilfield Services, Aladdin Kebab House is for restaurant, and Factor V Economic Development Services, and Rumer Brew House and Grill, that's for restaurant and bar. That's all for today.
Any questions of Shahid? Counselor Bossert?
Thank you, Shahid. I'm wondering if council could receive a list of those permit names, just so we are aware of the actual businesses that are coming into town?
Sure. Yeah, thanks.
Counselor Naddo?
Thank you, Shahid. It's just, I just wanted to comment that it's encouraging and I know a lot of people say that it is, it is obviously a downturn, but a lot of people are finding opportunities in this downturn and it's evident by some of the things that are happening. And somebody had mentioned, oh, there's nothing going on in planning and development. I said, no, there absolutely still is things going on in planning and development and it's encouraging to hear new businesses coming online into our community, so...
Yeah, if you see like first quarter of this year, this month is picking up again. Seems like a better situation now.
Yeah, very good to hear. Anything further? All right. Thanks very much.
Thanks.
Engineers Report. Ron Fraser.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Engineering Section has been spending a lot of time lately going over its projects anticipated for 2016. This includes a lot of review of alternatives for twinning of the self-sanitary trunk line. We're considering various options and what would give the town and the county the, I guess, the best utilization of the funds available. And there are some complexities, but we're working through those options. We're also reviewing projects to be funded under the federal gas tax and MSI for 2016 to ensure that we do address the most critical needs, maximize the use of those funds, especially given the current tight financial constraints and current economic conditions. We've had discussions with Municipal Affairs about the flexibility of projects this year and going forward under the federal gas tax and MSI to clarify how much latitude flexibility we have. We've been working very closely with the county on ACP-funded projects such as the ring road engineering and design and trail connectivity. We look forward to applying again, probably for next year on the trail system, hopefully get, and other projects, hopefully get additional funding. Lately, we've commenced construction of the electrical installation at the Open Space Park with TB traffic. Dinah and I have been out there quite a bit, marching around, making sure the connections are in the right place and where we plan to have tree plantings and so forth, so we can have some Christmas lighting. Landscaping work is also to commence fairly soon by Bluegrass Sod Farms, so we're looking forward to the completion of the Open Space Park this season and the soil conditions obviously are excellent, very dry. We're completing the updating of the snow removal policy in preparation for next winter and so that'll be brought to council soon. As far as sweeping residential areas through town, I've been informed that's going to be complete tomorrow. As far as the residential areas and as far as the contract work, the town forces will continue to work in the business parks, industrial areas until complete. And 50th Ave and 50th Street will be, continue to be swept on an ongoing basis as required and other urgent areas. The traffic studies, all of them that we have been working on are being finalized and finished and put to bed, so to speak. We are commencing shortly a new study with McIlhenny Consultants out of Prince George. And this relates on looking at our existing signage and line markings and ensuring that we have consistency and we're meeting current standards and so forth. And so I'm looking forward to this commencing and I think council will like it once we get the report and recommendations. Thank you.
Ron, when you say the traffic studies are being finalized, finished, and put to bed, by that, do you mean recommendations prepared for council?
Sure. Well, a lot of these items, I guess, are for information purposes and so forth and so obviously we are prepared to take it to council, yes. Thank you.
Anything further? Counselor Naddo?
Hi, Ron. I just had a question in terms of last year where we, maybe some projects had to end earlier because of the weather and they weren't quite complete. And now that the weather is beautiful and earlier than expected, are some of those being moved up at all in terms of completion? I can, I'll be specific because I was asked very specifically by the principal at Aurora why that connection and if that's going to be complete because it's starting to be, I know Tom travels that road as well, quite challenging in the parking lot, that cut through. So I was asked to funnel that along and that's what I'm doing.
Sure. And I discussed that with Paul yesterday, actually, and it's a very small amount of asphalt that we have to get for that project. And in order to get any kind of decent price on it, we have to amalgamate it with other work in the area, like if they're going to send trucks from Edmonton with asphalt, that's the only way we can possibly get a good price. So I don't have a definitive timeline, but once the asphalt plants get started working again and projects happening, then we'll tie into that and get it complete.
If you could keep me in the loop on that or at least make that connection with the school division so they're aware of that, that would be helpful.
Sure. No problem. Thanks.
All right. Thanks very much. Community Services and FCSS, Annette.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are several things on the go, of course, but I'll just highlight a few things. First of all, just again, clapping for Teresa and her staff for the presentation on the programming. Yeah, it's been, it's been wonderful. It's been a great addition to the Community Services Department, so glad to see that there's an excellent response from the community. Open space, as Mr. Fraser mentioned, the open space development in the old HW pickup grounds certainly definitely... certainly definitely moving forward, and certainly the dry conditions makes it conducive to the contractors wanting to move on early. We met with the outdoor rink committee again as well, too, and of course, they're still working hard at putting the plans together for the outdoor rink, and we'll see that come about this summer. And just a whole lot of attention to detail now with respect to managing that, that Just in light of some of the things coming up here, and this is just, gee, just within the next two weeks or so, but first and foremost, we have the free spaghetti supper with Dr. Unger, that's happening tomorrow night. We then have on the same night, we have our arts and culture groups and organizations getting together and talk about forming that umbrella organization that we've been anxious to look at, so I'll be attending that one as well, too. Operation Clean Sweep is on Earth Day this Friday, so if any volunteers, individuals or organizations are wanting to help out, please give us a call. The, on Saturday, we have the Little Rascals sale, garage sale, and vintage craft sale happening on the 23rd, so again, a great opportunity for families that are looking to not have to expend huge amounts to get the clothing or the items that they need for their family needs. So again, that's the Little Rascal sale. What else do we have coming up? April 29th to 30th, the Chili Cook-Off, the Per Rodeo, the trade show, all happening on the same weekend, so that should be a pretty busy time at the Omoplex then. And of course, May 7th is the triathlon, so this is all happening within the next three-week period. Hopefully, everybody's geared up for the triathlon, if not as an athlete, then certainly as a volunteer, because I know that we will need volunteers for that program. And a couple of other things. The urban housing program, just want to make mention to individuals that if they are looking for affordable housing, that if they're not too sure whether they're eligible or not eligible underneath our urban housing program, please contact our management group, which is the Brazos Seniors Foundation, to go and see if they might be eligible for residency in our units that we have through the urban housing program. Last thing I'd talk, well, not last, second last, sorry, want to talk about, just again, some of the initiatives that are happening within our community to sort of bring people together. I talked last time about, you know, starting those conversations and with individuals who are unemployed or at risk of being unemployed or not receiving as many hours that they, as they need, and of course, suffering through these economic times. It is absolutely amazing to hear some of the good things that are happening within this community in terms of people reaching out and doing things. Last night, I know a huge number of individuals, males, got together just simply to talk about what is it that they can do within this community while they're sitting idle, because we know the economy will come back, but it will take some time. And I have two pages of notes, different things that they're talking about, whether it's just simply a, a skill swap, or a job swap, or just a Facebook page to talk about, you know, the odd jobs here and there that people do need, getting together for whether it's sports, or whether it's, you know, just having conversations at events, at Canada Day. All of these ideas are coming forward, and it, it's great that we're, we're able to help facilitate those types of conversations going on. And I think that's one of the things that we have to keep on doing, is just make sure that people remain connected to this community, because we do have a great community, and it's just not the happiest of times right now, but things will get better, and we just want to make sure that people understand that. Last I want to do is allow Lola to introduce a new employee to our community services department.
Good morning.
Morning.
As many of you probably noticed, Jennifer Finn is now on mat leave. In fact, I'm hearing rumors that she might actually be in the hospital today, so we might actually have some exciting news from Jennifer later on today, I'm hoping. Anyways, in her absence, I'm pleased to introduce you to Angela Petula. We're very fortunate to find someone like her, because she comes to us with a wealth of FCSS experience. She actually worked for Anzac FCSS back a few years ago for six years, so she is not a stranger to FCSS. She, she was very involved with volunteers in the community, did lots of the programs before that we, that we do now, and most importantly, our newest and brand-new program is our home support program for seniors, of which she's actually supervised one of those before, so we're really excited to have her. We've had her for a few weeks already. She was in charge of the volunteer appreciation banquet, which she did a great job on that. She'll be doing Operation Clean Sweep, so she's doing great already, so just welcome to Angela.
Welcome.
She didn't tell me I had to say hi. Hi.
So, a woman of few words, okay. Welcome, and thank you for, for joining us with FCSS, and on behalf of council, unless they all want to do so individually, best of luck, best wishes to Jen and her family, if today's the day. I don't know if I have today in the pool, but whatever. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay. Nine point three, emergency services.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council. I'm here to present the March stats for 2016. Few, few stats to date. We had a total of 21 call-outs for the month of March, two fire calls, both of them involved vehicles. One was a semi-trailer that was on fire, the other one was a tent trailer that was completely involved when we arrived on scene. We also had a couple of grass fires. It is grass fire season, and so we started off in March with two. One of them was a result of an individual burning some garbage, which spilled over into some grass, which caused a grass fire. The other one was an outside fire along the river. We had one motor vehicle collision, which was a two-vehicle, motor vehicle collision with minor injuries. We had 11 alarm calls, six of them were residential, three of them were business, and then two of them were at a, at a local school. We are in the process of dealing with those individuals on, on various degrees in terms of education process as well as fines. We also responded to assist another agencies. We responded to four calls, all of them with EMS, and one of them involved a cardiac arrest call, and the other three were to assist with patient care. And the last area was, we had one miscellaneous call, which was a carbon monoxide alarm at a local resident. So that brought us to a total of 21 calls for the month of March. I'd just like to advise everybody that we are in a fire advisory status right now. It is extremely dry and windy, which are not good conditions for fire situation. We have been helping our neighbors at Parkland County. They've had some extremely large fires, so we have been up there assisting them with their, their fire operations through mutual aid agreement. So, I'd just like to warn everybody that the fire hazard is high, and for everybody, everybody to be cautious. As well, one other thing that the fire department's been working on, we are in the process of working on the feasibility study for the joint RCMP fire facility. It is coming along very well. We will be presenting a schwakload of, of information to council shortly, but it is moving along. Any questions?
Thanks very much. Counselor Bossert.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thanks, Tom, for come, for your report this morning. I'm wondering what it is that triggers us going from a fire advisory status into a partial ban or a full ban when we see neighboring municipalities already in a full fire ban? What does it take for us to, to shift into that status?
One of the, one of the areas we look at is we look at Alberta agriculture and forestry. We have, part of our, our county area covers Alberta forestry area, and we kind of take their lead. They have experts that are constantly monitoring, monitoring the weather, constantly monitoring the soil conditions, so we generally take their lead, and currently, right now, they are at a fire advisory status in our area, which is why we are staying at a fire status, or fire advisory status.
Anything further? All right. Thanks very much. Nine point four, administration and communications and marketing. Tyler Russell.
Good morning, Mayor, council.
Morning.
Oh, no, we're on. Good morning. You guys are all doing very, very well. Last time that I was here, we were under a thousand on our app, and Ms. Stone was nice enough to inform me that you were over a thousand. We're continuing over a thousand on our app right now, so I'm very, very pleased to be able to report that. We'll wait till 2,000 until we make the next big announcement there, too. It's nice to see the Chief Thompson use my word schwakload this morning, so thank you. Appreciate that. Also, there was a question last time about the website, about our event section that is on our website. It is in our media testing phase right now. I have seen it. It's outstanding. It looks great. I just, we just have to test it for a while to be able to make sure that it works properly, and once it does, we will launch it on our website to be able to be available to the public. Very, very ease of use to be able to upload different events to our website, so I really, really like that. Also, I'd just like to thank Mayor McLean for doing a great job at the Tour of Alberta on Friday at the press conference, and it was, everybody that had watched the video, and you can see it on our Facebook page, it was outstandingly well-spoken, so it was a great, great way to be able to profile our community, so I thank you for that, and I think Drayton Valley should thank you for that as well, because it was really, really great. Other than that, yeah, Tour of Alberta is coming September the 3rd. We're really excited, and we will have detailed information for each and every one of you counselors as soon as possible. So, that is all.
Thank you very much. Any questions? All right. Counselor Wheeler.
I was just wondering about maybe connecting, we have the triathlon coming up, we have a lot of athletes and athletes coming from other communities that do biking, if we could do some kind of an announcement or stand or something happening there about the Tour of Alberta coming?
That was, that was part of it, and I'll have to designate someone to do that since I'm emceeing the day, and it's a really tight jersey I have to wear, so we will find time to be able to make sure that the word is out, yes.
All right. Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Economic development, Eric Burton.
So, it's been a busy couple of weeks in economic development, and I'm going to just try to give some highlights to touch on a few things that we're working on and some of the exciting things that have happened. So, first off, we had a very successful EARN Expo. It was an interactive career and education expo held on April 12th. We had a steady stream of schools bring in youth to meet with employers, to talk about different career paths and different education pathways that, that can lead them to really promising careers. We're excited that we had a full slate of exhibitors there. We were a little bit lower on the sponsorship this year, which might be expected during some difficult times, but I want to say that the Omniplex staff did an amazing job of, as I'm sure they always do, and I also want to thank, in particular, the county for taking the lead on organizing this great event. I think, you know, for, we, we have these every two years, and one of the takeaways for me was that I think an opportunity going forward is to, to really highlight entrepreneurship as, as a career path for our youth, and so that's something that we'll be looking to incorporate into the, into the next one. A number of us also attended the EDA conference, and I'm not going to give a, a full report on this at this time, but I do want to touch on a few key things. It was, it was, the EDA was Economic Developers of Alberta. It was an opportunity to connect with other economic development professionals and elected officials and experts in the field, and what really stood out to me in all of the conversations that I had was that even though these are very difficult economic times across the province, nobody is better positioned than Drayton Valley to diversify the economy. A lot of the investments that have been made are, well, are just about to pay off, I think, and that, I think, is well reflected in what the Minister of Economic Development and Trade had to say, but also in some of the budget items that he had alluded to that have since come to, to light. So, I just want to touch on a couple of those. There's 25 million being put into the Alberta Enterprise Corporation, and this is to help small businesses and medium-sized enterprises with a specific mention of clean technology. So, I think there's an opportunity there. There's 35 million invested in regional economic development, as well as 25 million in new apprenticeship and training opportunities. So, there's some really promising announcements there, and I think an opportunity for us to leverage the work we've done to really make the most of those opportunities. I want to also mention, in the case of diversification, there was one speaker that really stood out, and that was from the BDC, the Business Development Corporation, and he talked about the importance of diversifying and for, for businesses, and he gave some interesting statistics that I want to just quickly share. When they, they did a survey of businesses to determine how diversified they were, and there are five ways of looking at diversification. There's, you know, do you have more than one customer? Do you have more than one product line? Are you operating in more than one sector? Do you have more than one main location? And do you export internationally? And of the firms that said they were undiversified, only 17 of them, percent of them, were reporting strong revenues. On the other side of the scale, as you move up, you get, the more diversified they show, the more profitable and the more strength in their revenues, to 69 percent who are at five, diversified on all five fronts. And so that's a bit of a, a tale that we ought to be telling to our local business community about the importance of diversifying. And now is an important time to do that, because there's a lot of resources out there, you know? For example, the BDC has funding to, to provide support to businesses looking to diversify their, their portfolios, and now is the time to access those resources. It's not the time when you've, when businesses have waited until they're in crisis mode, right? Now is the time to be thinking creatively and saying, you know, which, how can we diversify during these tough times? And, because there's a lot of resources to, to support them, and we're going to be working with our partners to better highlight and raise more awareness of those, those opportunities. The Chamber of Commerce has had, has been really building some momentum over the previous months. They had a good event on April 7th, where they had a number of businesses come out, and they're organizing a start-of-business open house on April 26th from 10:00 to 5:00 at the Lakeview Inn, and so all people who have some ideas about, you know, potentially opening a business are encouraged to come out. There are going to be a number of guest speakers, including yours truly. I'll be talking about the entrepreneurial ecosystem and all the supports that are out there for businesses. I know the government of Alberta will be there to talk about jobs and about different training, training and how to leverage some of the government programs. So, I think it will be a good opportunity to connect with what I like to call w-entrepreneurs and turn them into entrepreneurs, so really looking forward to that, and I, and I appreciate the Chamber's work. I know they've been pounding the pavement, going to door-to-door to build that momentum, and at the Career Expo, they gathered about 25 youth volunteers and are looking to, to try to leverage their, their support, so some good work being done there. And finally, we are working with the government of Alberta on a biomass study. Now, we're, we're not in a position to announce it so much, because we're, we're hoping to finalize the details, but we have been working over the past six months. We had them come out and do a tour of the warehouser facility, as well as DH Manufacturing Fibre Mat Plant, and there was a number of representatives from different departments, and they got to see for themselves the opportunities here in Drayton Valley, and what we would like to do is leverage their expertise and their resources to be able to work together. They have an interest in seeing biomass cluster development across the province, and as I alluded to at the beginning, there's no place better in Alberta for biomass cluster than Drayton Valley, so looking forward to finalizing a relationship with them so that we can move forward with, in partnership. So, those are some of the highlights of the work we've been doing. We are putting the final touches on the community. We are putting the final touches on the community profile, which is going to help put our best foot forward to the investment communities and entrepreneurial community, as well as a strategy that will guide us in making the most of the important investments that we've already been making.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions? Counselor Bossert.
Not so much a question, as a comment. Thank you so much for your information. I think about the situation that our community is experiencing right now with the downturn in economy, and how many of us are feeling that this is not a great time for our community. But it can also be a time to take advantage of new things and new ideas, and to propel wantrepreneurs into entrepreneurs. And I think some of the work that you're doing and the advocacy that I see that you are doing is really going to help people that are just on the edge of an idea take that leap and source out support and resources and business assistance in their new adventures. I'm, I'm speaking from experience within my own family. I have a, an adult child who is now taking that leap, and some of these programs and workshops that have been going on where you've been involved with them, they have been providing great information on the local level. And I know that people that are facing less work right now, they may in the back of their mind say, this is a good time for me to take advantage of this situation and move forward. So I thank you for what you're doing in the community, for highlighting our community as a place of opportunity, and giving people the hope, perhaps even, that now is a good time to take advantage of the ideas that they might be, have kicked around for years, and, and maybe it's time to unpackage that and move forward. So thank you for what you're working on.
It's absolutely my pleasure.
All right, thank you very much. And CAO Report, Mr. Dibbin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, Council. A few things to, to touch on for this report, and I'll start with an appreciation for the kind words that the mayor indicated earlier in the agenda on behalf of all of Council, with the volume of work that's now starting to find its way to Council, whether it's in the way of bylaw policy and along those lines. Over the last few months, a significant amount of staff time being pulled in a number of different directions has been working on these elements that have been represented by some of these policies, some of the bylaws, the financial statements, and our ongoing review and discussions on finalizing budget matters that will be coming to head here very shortly. And so certainly, we appreciate your support and your understanding of all these aspects, because we do see different plateaus and peaks in the volumes and activities along those lines. And there are times where we're not necessarily as expedient with some of the responses and actions and elements as we would like to be, but we'll continue to strive and be diligent on that, and we appreciate those kind words of support when we get them. I did have the opportunity to attend the Local Government Administrators Association Red Deer at the beginning of the month. The, my first participation from an administrator's perspective in that August gathering. The timing of the conference, I think, was a little unfortunate with the provincial budget not yet being out. Normally, it is out, and one day of that session is devoted to basically an interaction with government officials. So of course, this year, there was little that they could say, other than to kind of say, okay, we've been aware of these issues, we're working on these issues, they're live, information is coming. Certainly, they were responsive to some of the elements and aspects of what different administrators and community representatives had to say. Two main themes that were very interesting was, even though all are aware that a revised MGA is coming, there are specific elements of the last amendments to the MGA that have not been proclaimed. And two of those items that were of very significant interest to administrators were code of conduct for municipal councillors, and what then the role of administration would be if and when those elements are to be proclaimed, of which there wasn't really any feedback from the province at this point in time. But the other aspect was, was an intriguing one with a lot of focus being on multi-year budgeting processes. And I think a number of legitimate questions that if those provisions for having to submit three-year capital operating budgets and five-year, pardon me, three-year operating budgets and five-year capital budgets to the province are proclaimed, can municipalities expect the same level of information and certainty from the province as it relates to budgets, support, and other elements? Because if we do not have that, what is the value of providing you budgets on both the capital and operating side without certainty of your participation and support? To which empathy was given from provincial officials, and not much in the way of tangible response. So, but I, it was, I think, extremely valid compared to what some of those implications are for budgeting processes going forward, particularly as it relates to the overlap, perhaps with the end of one municipal term and the start of another municipal term going forward. Mr. Russell already mentioned, I too had the opportunity to attend the Tour of Alberta launch in Edmonton last week, along with Ms. Livingston and the mayor. And it may be inappropriate, but I have to confess, I was very proud of the mayor, on behalf of Council and the comments that he made, and a very compelling, very succinct reason why the tour, why Drayton Valley, and why it's important. And so I hope that all citizens have the opportunity to see that and review that on the Facebook page. Sorry that the media has already left for the day, but I think that that is an incredibly valid and valuable statement. And I also must point out that on the Edmonton Journal, in the story, a prominent reference to the DV100. And that was a very significant element of the mayor's comments as to why, and the synergy and the growing culture of cycling in the community that this just helps to promote and foster, which I think also is a very compelling reason as to why the tour and why Drayton Valley. To advise Council, we have had an initial interim review as the administration review team of bids that were received for animal control services. We are focusing our review on two bids, and we'll be having follow-up conversations with the bidders in the next week or two, with the hope to get to a point of making that award by the time of the next council meeting or shortly thereafter. And I would advise Council that the Section 690 application concerning County Bylaw 892-15 has been filed with the Municipal Government Board. The process is unfolding as it should, and we have been advised by the county that they are prepared to enter intermediation in an effort to hopefully address and resolve some of the concerns that were posed by the town during the initial phase as it relates to that bylaw, which has been passed, but basically now is held in advance as we go through this process. So I just wanted to have Council aware of that fact. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that would conclude my report.
Thank you very much. Council reports, Counselor Nidell.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief, because Eric totally stole my thunder. But that's okay. I did attend the Communities in Bloom meeting. Judges, as we said last council meeting, are attending on July 26th to tour our community. Again, we are competing at a national level, which is exciting. We have put a call out, and people can attend our Facebook page as well, in terms of requests for plantings and perennials for the south entrance. So that's as you come into town opposite where the Dericks and the town of Drayton Valley is, that other side. That is also the area where they had planted the bulbs from Tulips last year, so those are starting to come up that are donated with a partnership with Den, Holland, where I went with that. So we are asking for people to bring in perennials, and if they're thinning things out, they can taunt and tag Joan at Public Works, I believe, from the last email that stated. And then they will start implementing that, so we can bring down costs. We're also hoping to make that area with our suggestion of being bee-friendly. Yes. So it's an exciting initiative that we'd like to kind of pilot, and because it's away from set areas where there's not necessarily walking trail, people feel that may be more comfortable in having a pilot in that area. So we're excited, and that's a pretty cool initiative for a small community such as ours, especially one in, in our resource area. So that's something that we'd like to promote within that. And the committee had also put together a letter of recommendation to Dwight and to Public Works in terms of incorporating native plantings and perennials in our flower beds, which we had made the request previously. So we're making the request again in keeping with our landscape development plan that was approved by Council several years ago. So we're hoping that we can see that, and again, that's a benefit to the community, because then those costs come down as well, so. So that's Communities in Bloom. I did attend the EDA conference, as already stated, and I would agree with everything that Eric said, again. I would state that overall messaging was innovation and diversity equals resiliency in communities. And communities that are investing in those initiatives and businesses are the ones that are surviving and thriving right now. So there are many things that are, that can help in that process. BDC is one of the ones that Eric had commented to, and we are hoping to, I did extend an invitation for them to come out to the community, and there's potential of working with CETC to bring them out and to talk about those loans that can be accessed from our local businesses that are looking at diversifying, which is an excellent thing right now. So we're very excited about that. I also attended some sessions and spoke, and listened to sessions about tourism and how that can improve local economy, and some different initiatives. One was vocation vacations, and I thought that was a really cool idea, and I'd mentioned it to Economic Development at the session, and, and with this wonderful training center that may be coming up, maybe people would like to pretend to be a firefighter for a weekend, and what, that could be a really cool initiative. So, things like that. There was also farm-to-table, going out to farms and getting that knowledge base out there. So those are other potentials that we can work with our partners, maybe through Brazos County, and investigate those. So there was initiatives in terms of tourism that were really interesting. Overall, and we did extend, Graham and myself did meet with the Minister briefly. We hounded him, stalked him a little bit after his address, and invited him to come out to, to see the CETC and open it, and he, and that an invitation would be following. And he was very excited to do that. So there are great initiatives going on, but again, the overall message was innovation and diversification is resiliency. And there was economic forecasting, which really is kind of their best guesses. It's not going to get any better in the next six months, but they're hoping by the fall of 2017 that things will be turning around. But again, there's lots of opportunities right now where people can access, and that was proven with, with the provincial budget that came out, that there are ways to access that. And Eric is absolutely right, that we're never more, never better positioned than right now, absolutely. And we are on the map in terms of the province, so that's good, and we just need to keep enforcing that. I did attend a session on junior achievers, which is something that the mayor was, he was known about, but that was new to me in terms of encouraging entrepreneurship in the school system and, and starting at a young age. So that's something that I think on a personal level, I will look at volunteering for, but it will be a part of something that I will enhance when I, or speak about when I do do my report. So those are the things. And we did have a really good session with Bow Valley College in terms of how they're currently transferring those skills for the oil and gas and into different courses and their curriculum. So I thought that was a benefit with us and one of our pillars of CETC, and like to maybe further that conversation. So again, it was overall a good conference, certainly a lot of learning. Through the Economic Development Committee, we had also been talking about the community profile. We had a debrief on, on the convention as well, and we're moving towards the economic development strategy coming forward to be presented to Council. So that's on a business level, professional level, but I want to say, go Miss Joanne's School of Dance, because we are competing, well, I say "we" because apparently, I feel like I'm competing, too. But I just want to say, encouraging all the dancers and staff that are attending for the Love of Dance competition this weekend and in Sherwood Park, or Fort Saskatchewan, sorry, it's all about Fort Saskatchewan, I just want to encourage all those dancers and the staff on representing Drayton Valley. Thank you.
Very good, thanks very much. 10.3, Counselor Long.
Thank you. I also attended the Economic Development Conference, but I will not go over it for a third time. I think the, the one point that perhaps hasn't been mentioned yet is that the Minister in his speech was absolutely emphatic on his support for pipelines, not just east, but west and south, to get our crude to market. So all our questions been out there about exactly where the government stands, he was 100% in favor, and he speaks with some authority on that. So good news, probably in the longer term, before anything got going. But apart from that, still in the economic development, we have put a lot of time into the community profile, or Eric has put a lot of time into the community profile, and Nicole and I have kind of watched in awe, and we have the, the strategy coming forward. And I think we're looking at getting that to a GNP meeting, the one after next, or sometime shortly, so coming forward in the summer. But beyond that, last couple of weeks been fairly quiet. We've had a couple of CETC meetings, which I'll leave to Counselor Schuler, and one Library Board meeting at which nothing much happened, so I will leave it there.
All right, thank you. Counselor Schuler.
Thank you. I do want to say that I am rather disappointed with our local media in the fact that they feel that the reports coming forward from administration and Council don't deserve them sticking around and doing any type of reporting on it, because there's some very good information that they seem to come back and ask about at a later date that's brought forward during this time. And I think if they were, stay around, they'd have a better idea of what Council's doing, so I did want to point that out.
Nobody's here to report it, though.
Yeah. Yeah. So anyway, as Counselor Long indicated, CETC has been extremely busy. There's lots of good stuff coming up, and actually, we're going to, we're trying to get on to a GNP agenda to actually do a presentation to Council, and I think we'll leave it at that, because there is a lot of information that's not for public yet, so just to say that there is some really good work going on and some real potential opportunities coming up that I think Council may be excited about. I also attended the Legacy Committee, and that committee is, is definitely moving ahead. They're in the process, just waiting on the province now to give them the society status. So that's going forward. They're, as soon as that happens, they're ready to go. They've had some funds donated, or will be donated as soon as that status goes through. And they are currently working on getting the copies of the Western Review and previous newspapers into digital format, the ones that are not. So that will be moving ahead very, very shortly. I'd say we're just kind of waiting on that society status, and then that will move ahead. They've also started looking at the town's 60th anniversary and have some ideas on what can be done, so that's going to be coming forward, working with some other groups and, including the town. So that looks somewhat exciting. The other one we had was the Housing Committee, and I'm not going to steal Counselor Bossert's thunder on that one, since she's the chair, so I'm going to leave it, leave it to her to report on that one. And I think that is my report.
Thank you very much. Counselor Wheeler.
Thank you. I had a, attended a Headwaters meeting, and we are planning a trip in August, inviting out the Minister. It will be in Clearwater County, but going on a canoe trip and taking them down the river and talking about what's happening with the land and with the water and all different types of, our Headwaters area issues that we have. But the idea is that we're coming up with to solve them. As our group with our nine municipalities together, we work a lot on the common issues. We want to make sure that the Minister and the government are knowing the work that we're doing, so that it can be worked into their plans as well. So, yeah, more details will come further along, I'm not sure. In terms of a guest list, they're kind of looking at doing it over two days, so there might be different opportunities for different municipalities to be there and hosting. I was at the EPAC performance for the Grade Four. I was at the EPAC performance for the grade fours. They used the EPAC space and did a wonderful social presentation on what it could be like back in the 1900s. The kids wrote the skits themselves and then acted in them, and they were very cute and very short, but it was a great way to engage the community in what was happening. And yeah, yeah, it was really neat to see. And for EPAC to be a part of that, by, they donated the space for the kids to use, was wonderful to see our facility being used in such a good way. So I did attend the Smart Cities Symposium, and they worked a lot on innovation and that a smart city is one that best recognizes and leverages innovation. But that innovation isn't just invention, it's a novel creation that actually produces value and how you work into that with a city. Some of the strategies I attended were based a bit more around asset management and connection, and there's a lot of neat companies that are doing things, once we are connected as well as we are, we have a huge advantage to be working through. So Drayton Valley was highlighted by Purple Forage. They were there and they showed our app and what was going on. Everyone was like, "Ooh, I didn't know Drayton Valley was techie." I was like, "Oh, we're techie." So it was, it was a good conference. It was only one afternoon and one morning, so it was very short and very condensed, but yeah, I'll highlight more things as we go on with my report. And then just that the Kinn Performing Festival is happening right now. So there's lots of stuff if people want to go see free entertainment with all, in, there's daytime, and I believe there's some evening with the final performances coming up and yeah, of our community. So that's it.
Thank you very much. Who knew that using the app from time to time would make me techie? At least that's what I got from that. So I'm clinging to it. Councillor Bossert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May 1st, I attended a meeting for FCSS where we did another semi-annual, semi-annual grant run. And I'm always impressed how this grant run or this opportunity for granting to community groups can help the groups move forward with initiatives for the community. And there's quite a substantial amount of money that's granted out each year, and I think our community is very fortunate to have that access to those funds. May 4th, Cosette came to our GNP and presented a branding presentation for Drayton Valley, which I found very interesting and look forward to some of their final presentations coming forward. May 4th, I also attended our homelessness and poverty reduction strategy team. This, this group is always moving forward with the different initiatives addressing homelessness and poverty in our community. And as I was able to mention in a newspaper article this week, we have many opportunities in the community to assist people that are having difficulties with housing at this moment, whether it's a MAP program for people that find themselves needing emergency overnight shelter, to other initiatives that are provided in form of rent subsidies and other ideas. So this committee is, works on modifying or bringing together the providers of those services, including working with the food bank and Warming Hearts as well. So we've been having meetings with those associations. We also, this, the homelessness group is working towards, once again, having an overnight Chilling in DV homeless awareness night, where we hope to bring together a number of young people and maybe not-so-young people to experience homelessness for one night in our community by camping out in one of our public spaces and experiencing what that's like, seeing what homelessness can be like and raising awareness for that. So hopefully in June, we'll be able to host that event here in the community. Also, on May 4th, I attended the aquatic committee meeting, I think it was for councillor Schuler who was away, Fredrickson who was away. And it was more of a workshop that we went through establishing clear expectations of what the members around the table and what members from the community are hoping to see in the end with our aquatic facility. It was a very interesting exercise for myself, having not been overly involved in it, but I think in the end, the community will have a facility that they helped shape, and I'm looking forward to that. May 11th to 16th, I was at the National Housing and Homelessness Conference in Montreal. It was a very intense three-day conference in the beautiful city of Montreal. 750 delegates coming together with a number of different workshops, presentations about what other communities in Canada are doing for homelessness and housing initiatives, and also had the opportunity to see several different excellent examples of housing initiatives in Montreal whose models could be scaled and effective in a community our size. So I came back with some very interesting information about how, social housing and blended housing initiatives. That's a blend of social housing, under-market housing, and market housing, all residing in the same area. Also in infusing a number of sustainability measures that were very simple but very effective in the community. Also was able to take in a tour of examples of where art was applied in social housing settings, art forms such as painting, murals, sculptures, flower arrangements, things like that, very simple things that can be incorporated to bring new life into areas of the community, whether it's social housing or not, things we don't even think of. And in fact, Drayton Valley does have a number of beautiful examples of outdoor art at our rural, sorry, Rotary Park, or the park where the food bank is. And we've got the murals on the food bank building, and they're beautiful. And those are great examples of what our community can do for social or outside art in our community. And so I'll be coming forward with a report on that conference. Right after coming back from the housing conference, we had a housing committee. This committee has just recently reconvened after a bit of a break, and, sorry, we're working towards continuing to review developer incentives for our community, working with a private citizen with the possibility of moving forward with a society that will work towards helping people with home ownership. So more information on that program will be coming forward, but it has great potential for our community. And talked about how we move forward with the lands that the town currently does own that have been designated for affordable housing. So again, we have many options in our community that already address affordable housing, but we're hoping to move forward with even more options in the future for our community. And last but not least, yesterday I was able to go into the Outreach School, which is our school downtown Drayton Valley, meet with a number of young people from grade 10 to 12 who have chosen Outreach as their choice of schooling, and do the Budgeting 101 presentation with Making Financial Sense. And I don't do that as a councillor, but I am honored to go into the schools in the community to do work with Making Financial Sense and just to work with the youth and see that we have amazing young people in this community, whether they're volunteering for different activities, which they often do. But these young people who are having different circumstances in their life, they still decided to commit to education. And many of them have to work to provide for themselves or family members, but they are still putting their education first. So it was really a delight to work with these young people, and I was very glad to do that. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bossert. For my part, I'll try to keep it brief. In addition to just numerous meetings with members of the public and the business community over the past several weeks, a couple of things, I was honored to help recognize there are many of our community's volunteers, hundreds of them in fact, at the Volunteer Appreciation Night on the 13th. As was alluded to, I think, the CETC committee meeting on the 14th, I attended with councillors Schuler and Long. And on the 15th, I was really quite honored to be asked by the Tour of Alberta organizers to speak on behalf of municipalities as to what the tour means to us as a community. There's been a great deal of talk at council this morning, a presentation from Community Services about the programming that's happening in the community. There's been talk about volunteers and individuals in the community working towards improving circumstances, difficult circumstances. The definition of resiliency is the ability to withstand difficult life circumstances. What we are seeing in the community, both within the infrastructure of the town of Drayton Valley and within the volunteers and other members of the community, it is resiliency in action. And so, you know, the Tour of Alberta is just one more thing that will help us to showcase our resiliency as a community. Very, very proud of our administration to be able to pull that together for us, and very proud of our community as, over the next four months or so, we gather the approximately 150 volunteers necessary to pull off the event. I have no doubt that we will do it and, and once again, demonstrate our resiliency as a community, that we are not our circumstances, we are better than that. So with that, item 11.0, information items, Drayton Valley District Family and Community Support Services, December Board Minutes, 11.2, the RCMP statistics for March 2016, 11.3, the Drayton Valley Municipal Library Board Minutes for March, what is that, March 2015 through January 2016, the Yellowhead Regional Library Annual Report, the Economic Development Committee Mini Committee Minutes for March, the Pembina Physician Recruitment and Retention Committee Minutes for January to February 2016, and the March Fire Services Report. Could I get a motion to accept those items as information? Councillor Long, all in favor? That is carried. Could I get a motion to adjourn? Councillor Schuler, all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just need clarity on councillor Bossert's report because she referenced the month of May for a lot of them.
Okay, thank you.
And, and sorry, just before I ask councillor Schuler to repeat his motion to adjourn, I want to recognize Gord Chaman for, thanks for dropping by. Did, did you wish to give him an opportunity with the microphone? We could be here for some time, but.
I've never missed enough to review this guy. I just came back to see if I could give my taxes a little.
Next.
Mayor and I are back for the month to do our taxes and check on the house, rebuild it.
And we appreciate that, the taxes part, yeah.
We're really enjoying it down there. Have quite a few people in Drayton Valley drop in, kind of all of the way that we've got back.
That's okay.
But anyway, I'll let you go and have your lunch, and I'll talk to you in a break here in a minute. It's great to be back. We do miss you. It's still part of our life.
Always good to see you.
I like the heat down there.
I bet, yeah. Good to see you. Thank you very much, councillor Schuler, making a motion to adjourn, all in favor? That is carried. We're adjourned.